Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kiel Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance from standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilman Mosley.
What's up, Bobby?
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Could everyone from Achieving Greatness who came with Mr. Neal come up and join us? It's truly an honor to do this proclamation this morning. Even though I was a... I joked when Mr. Neal invited me to be a speaker at the City League Hall of Fame Awards last fall, and I joked that, you know, if you ever looked at my stat line for the Perry Commodores, you would know that's as close as I was ever going to get to the City League Hall of Fame. So I really appreciate you, you know, allowing me to at least, you know, get within spinning distance of the Hall of Fame. So that's enough of an honor for me. So whereas Achieving Greatness Incorporated now in its 50th consecutive year of dedicated community service, established in 1974 as the Champions Association, the agency continues its mission as Achieving Greatness Incorporated, providing educational, recreational, social, athletic, employment, and community-based programs. And whereas the agency is the proud sponsor of 20-plus programs a year, including the nationally and internationally recognized Connie Hawkins NCAA Pro Summer Basketball League, the Franco Harris All-Pro Football Camp, the Willie Pop Star drill Pittsburgh MVP Awards banquet, the Kenny DuRette High School All-Star Basketball Classic, the Bishop Dwayne Darkens Senior Citizen Thanksgiving Dinner, and we also want to note that Bishop Darkens was also a member of this council, Pittsburgh Allegheny County All-Military and Public Service Awards, the Dwayne Woodruff Celebrity Golf Classic, Toys for Champions Christmas Party Toy Giveaway, and now the iconic Pittsburgh City League High School All-Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas for the past 50 years, this organization has impacted the lives of young people from every corner of Western Pennsylvania, playing a key role in the development of our region's most celebrated athletes. And whereas Achieving Greatness will hold their 50th anniversary gala on Saturday, October 5th, 2024, and now therefore let it be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and congratulate Achieving Greatness on their 50th anniversary, and be a further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October 24th, 2024 as Achieving Greatness Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
To move.
All those in favor say aye. Thank you very much. I've been here before and I've always appreciated the opportunity to be able to be recognized and applauded for our effort. I want to first present this book by one of our local authors, Jim O'Brien, who wrote the encyclopedia on Western Pennsylvania basketball, and it speaks to the Connie Hawkins Summer Basketball League and the impact that it had on providing over 300 college scholarships to local athletes and a host of other accomplishments. So I'm presenting this to Kahari Mosley. And I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the village that's a part of what we do and what we've done. We did not get here 50 years alone, and it's important that I recognize these folks that were kind enough to come down, but these are the people that were major part of what we've done, and I'll do it quickly. Dr. Karen Hall, who was the first woman to play in the Connie Hawkins All-Mens League and the first woman to coach. And I mean she played. And not only did she coach, she won back-to-back championships in the Connie Hawkins League, far preceding the WNBA that we see today. She would have been one of those players if timing had been different. Debbie Coleman is the only woman to run a national men's basketball league in the entire country when we were ranked top 10 nationally. In the back row is the grandson of the great Connie Hawkins, that Sean Hawkins, who played professionally in Europe, one of the nation's great college players as well. The gentleman next to him is Vince Lackner, Attorney Vince Lackner, Harvard basketball player that played in the Connie Hawkins League in its early years. Next to him is Bobby Franklin, the Hall of Fame basketball player from Point Park College that is the all-time leading scorer there, one of the early players in the Connie Hawkins League. And next to him is Clarence Hobson from the great Shinley High School tradition of city league championships and state titles, who also played at St. Francis College, played professionally in the NBA, and was executive with the Allegheny County Parks and Rec Department. Those guys as players speak to the importance of what the league was really about. For a while, our league was called Crime Stoppers because we averaged about 1,000 people a night, five nights a week from 1974 to 1985, '86. It was just unprecedented. For guys of that talent to play on an outdoor asphalt court with the likes of Norm Nixon and Sam Clancy and Connie Hawkins and Kenny DuRette was just unprecedented. Dr. Charlene Coleman, who is a vice president in Achieving Greatness, but does so many major things to help us maintain our stability. Penny Briggs and her husband Dennis Briggs. Dennis is the co-chairman of the Board of Directors for Achieving Greatness. He and his wife own Briggs Transportation Company. They are one of several Black-owned companies in Pittsburgh that have been major supporters to our organization, without whom we would have died a long time ago. And it's a very important person here. Mark Whitat is a retired Marine officer who is authoring a book about Connie Hawkins and the Pittsburgh Pipers 1968 World Championship, when Connie Hawkins and the Pittsburgh Pipers were the greatest team on the planet. So thank you for your time. We really appreciate this, and we hope to get another 50 years in. I'm sure we can.
I play hoops. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was on the state championship team. I didn't, I should have stuck with baseball.
So you think state championship, you get automatic?
And we'll move on to Councilwoman Warwick.
Could we have everyone come up for the Week Without Driving? Okay. So, yeah, so I just want to say a few words about the Week Without Driving before we get started reading the proclamation. So we had a kickoff event yesterday in Lawrenceville, and the purpose of the Week Without Driving is really for folks across the city to make the commitment to see what it's like for a week to get around Pittsburgh without a car. Because we have about 20% of our residents or so don't have their own personal vehicle, and anyone who has taken transit knows that it is incredibly difficult to get around this city without your own automobile. So I also encourage my fellow council members. Councilman Coghill, maybe he could do a day without driving? You got the T, I think, in your neighborhood, so. At any rate, you know, we did hear some really moving stories yesterday. You know, we heard from a high school student who takes two buses to get to school and another bus to get to our after-school program and two more buses to get home. You know, of course, if she misses one of those buses, that's, you know, that's she's missing out on learning and so much more, and that's high school kids across the city. We heard from a senior, really moving testimony from Ms. Penny Harris, I believe, yeah, talking about how it takes her four hours to get to and from church. Like four hours for her to get to just do like a half-hour, 45-minute service. And she asked, which really I found impactful, she asked why her time isn't worth the same as everyone else's time? Like, why, you know, why is it okay for her to, just because she doesn't have a car, just because she's in a wheelchair, isn't able to drive? Why is her time less valuable, right, to us as a society than people's time who happen to have a car? So at any rate, I just wanted to intro with that, and with that I will read this proclamation. Whereas, Week Without Driving is a nationwide movement started by Disability Rights Washington in 2021 to challenge leaders to better understand barriers non-drivers face in accessing their communities across the United States. And whereas this year, the first local Week Without Driving PGH initiative is being co-hosted by Pittsburghers for Public Transit, Access Mob Pittsburgh, Bike PGH, and AARP Pittsburgh with at least 22 organizational cosponsors. And whereas the City of Pittsburgh is committed to providing safe, accessible streets and transportation systems for all residents. And whereas in 2023, approximately 15% of Pittsburgh residents used public transportation to commute, and the majority of residents are still dependent on cars for their daily commute. And whereas, as the cost of owning a car continues to rise, many people cannot afford that cost, and nearly a third of the people residing in the United States do not have a driver's license, either because of their age or a condition that does not allow them to drive. And whereas, in addition to increasing barriers to transportation for individuals, reliance on cars contributes to transportation being the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States and results in the creation of tire dust that can be detrimental to watersheds. And whereas reliance on cars has also resulted in the increase of freeway expansions, which have been detrimental to neighborhoods in Pittsburgh, particularly those that are historically home to communities of color. And whereas the City of Pittsburgh has recognized mobility access as necessary for a healthy and safe community, promoting access to education and employment opportunities, medical services, shopping, recreation, and the ability to reach friends and family. And whereas the Week Without Driving Initiative aims to draw attention to the difficulties faced every day by non-drivers in our community and to inspire decision-makers to address these barriers and the gaps in our transportation system. And whereas, in supporting the Week Without Driving Initiative, the City of Pittsburgh furthers its dedication to the Vision Zero strategy and goal of reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries to zero. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognizes the week of Monday, September 30th, 2024 through Sunday, October 6th, 2024, as the Week Without Driving in the City of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that residents are encouraged to use public transit, walk, ride a bike, or use ride-sharing options to include carpooling in their everyday transportation needs.
May we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Would anybody like to say a few words?
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick and all of council. My name is Seth Bush. I am the advocacy manager at Bike Pittsburgh. Again, want to thank council and thank all of the co-hosts and cosponsors that are here today that made Week Without Driving, brought it here to Pittsburgh. Week Without Driving is an opportunity to think about our mobility rights, our right to have safe, accessible bikeways and walkways, our right to accessible, affordable transit, and dignified bus shelters, our right for us, our friends, neighbors, and children to get from point A to point B safely. Everyone, regardless of how they get around, deserves these rights, especially the young children in our communities, like Courtney Carter, who was recently killed in Homewood while riding her bike. That's what Bike Pittsburgh, Pittsburghers for Public Transit, Access Mob, AARP, and all of our now over 40 Week Without Driving partner organizations are advocating for every day: mobility justice. Mobility justice is about ensuring that everyone has equitable access to transportation options regardless of their income, ability, or the location of their neighborhood. When we embrace mobility justice, we work towards a system that serves all people, not just those who have a car. And we know that over 20% of Pittsburgh households don't have access to a vehicle, and 30% of people in the county don't drive, whether due to age, ability, financial reasons, or lifestyle choices. So Week Without Driving is an opportunity to cultivate empathy for the surprising amount of people who rely on other modes of travel, such as biking, walking, and taking the bus. All of those modes require good street design and infrastructure to be safe, accessible, and enjoyable. That includes bus shelters, quality sidewalks, protected bike lanes, intersections designed for people, and more. Unfortunately, the neighborhoods where car ownership is the lowest are often also lacking such vital infrastructure. We hope Week Without Driving can shine a light on those disparities and show where investment is most needed, especially as we enter the final stages of developing the city's 2025 budgets. We are glad to see a sustained investment in Vision Zero and traffic calming, and we need so much more. So thank you, council, again, and all of our co-hosts and cosponsors for highlighting the importance of such investments by supporting the Week Without Driving through this proclamation. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, council. My name is Elise McDonald, and I'm a brand-new resident of the city. I live in Brookline. I just moved from the metro Boston area with my husband, who recently retired from the USPS as a letter carrier. We moved here with the expectation that transit service that helped to sustain and grow the city for the past century would continue to receive the strongest support. And I'm hoping to see that, and so happy to see everyone here today. I'm on transit every day personally, maybe occasionally not on a Sunday, but most days. And I'm hoping that it will just continue to receive the support it deserves. Thank you so much. I kind of was put into this by accident because I discovered that bike lanes are vital for me. Sidewalks that are not passable puts me to find the smoothest roads possible. And then having to get onto buses, not all buses are alike. This will jam into the new doors that keep the driver safe. But anyway, it continues to be a struggle. I've noticed with drivers making left-hand turns, they don't think a person on a bike or a wheelchair or a walker has the right to cross even though the little light is blinking that way. So we continue to need this awareness in all levels of government that drivers need to be educated that we do have the right of way when we're crossing. We shouldn't have to spend thousands of dollars for blinking and flashing lights, although they will save our lives. I love the fact that PPT and PRT are now with you, and there is this heightened awareness. I have only once been out to the Homewood area, and I will honestly say, because I went to a meeting at the YWCA, I was forced down the main road because the sidewalks were horrible for ADA accessibility. And one of the people here with us was with me, and it was pretty dangerous, but luckily the traffic wasn't that bad that day, but it would have been. We need to make this city more accessible and safer. Trees are causing sidewalks to lift up. Anyway. I thought you were cutting.
No, but I'm just cutting your timer up there.
Yeah. Now I completely lost my train of thought, but anyway, yes, please come together. Look at the sidewalks. I've challenged all of you all the time. Come for a ride with me. Walk with me. I literally go from Beachview down Wentzle, which is really sketchy, up Old Banksville, up Potomac, down Green Tree Road, all the way down to Poplar and Mansfield just to go and go to church. Come with me. You could easily make that a bike lane. Hint, hint, just paint little pictures of bikes. Thank you. Have a great day.
Do members want to come up for a picture?
Mr. Lavelle, oh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith.
Barb's a little taller than I am. Can we have the folks for Glimmer of Hope Foundation? Please come forward. You can come up here. You want to come up? Hi, sorry we kept you so long here. Bill Brooker. So Bill Brooker, who's an attorney and helps with the DA's office on a lot of things. His wife is involved. Wasn't he his wife?
Yeah, I'm not his wife.
You're not his wife?
He's our attorney.
His wife is involved in this organization. He brought it to my attention. This great work, I was so excited when I heard about it. It was about a year ago. So every year I give the Proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness and for Domestic Violence Awareness in October. So this year I have this proclamation for breast cancer awareness. Whereas, in 2024, an estimated in the United States, it is estimated that in the United States, there will be over 300 and almost 11,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer among women. And in 2020, it was estimated that more than 168,000 women were living with metastatic breast cancer. And whereas, a Glimmer of Hope Foundation founded in 1994 by Diane Napper is a nonprofit dedicated to finding a cure for breast cancer. Ms. Napper created the foundation in honor of her friend Carol Jo Weiss Friedman, who lost her battle with breast cancer in 1990. And whereas, a Glimmer of Hope is committed to raising funds for cancer research and programs, and most importantly, clinical trial studies in pre-menopausal breast cancer. Breast cancer in women under 40 is increasing with no government protocols to receive screenings. A Glimmer of Hope Foundation is expanding to receive screenings. A Glimmer of Hope Foundation is expanding its efforts to a national level to focus more attention to this alarming development. And whereas, through the various fundraising events, they have raised more than $3 billion for the cause. One such event is the race to beat breast cancer in 2024, a 5K run walk to be held on October 5th at North Park. All funds donated from their events go to Allegheny Health Network, McGee Women's Research Institute, the UPMC Human Cancer Center, and Allegheny General Hospital. And whereas, because of the generous donations from a Glimmer of Hope Foundation, I love this part, McGee Women's Research Institute and the UPMC Human Cancer Center are now examining a blood-drawn test as a liquid biopsy, which will allow, and if you've ever had to have a biopsy, you'll appreciate that they're going to have this type of screening, hopefully in the very near future, which will allow real-time monitoring of the size and severity of breast cancer tumors and their response to therapy. Most recently, $100,000 seed funding was provided to UPMC and the University of Pittsburgh to launch a clinical trial on a vaccine for DCIS, breast cancer, which would teach the immune system to identify the precancer cells and attack them before they turn into invasive cancer. I mean, this is amazing work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend a Glimmer of Hope Foundation in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 to be a Glimmer of Hope Foundation Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'll give you this proclamation. Sorry.
Wonderful.
Sorry. Thank you.
This is Diana.
Okay, Diana.
Hi, I'm Ginger Pillar, and I ended up meeting Diana Napper a little over 10 years ago. I was a survivor, and I was working on a event. And I've been good friends with her and worked with her for the last 10 years. And I can tell you, this organization has done a tremendous job in our area. All funds that are raised here stay here. I know that she just works tirelessly for all of the patients within the different networks here in Pittsburgh. You know, you said 3 million?
Yes.
That number has doubled since 2020. So more funds are being funneled into research. And there's also a Glimmer of Hope Metastatic Center at AHN now that was started in 2020. And a lot of young metastatic patients are getting really, really good, fine care by Dr. Hilton there. So I'm going to let Diana say a few words, but we just thank the council for recognizing her organization. And we hope that we continue to funnel this into the community, and it will go nationwide on some of these research studies. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't say anything yet. Wait. Thank you very much for the honor and to all the other organizations that have been honored today. It's truly, it's an honor to stand here. But most importantly is our vaccine. There was a famous vaccine that came out of Pitt that came out of here for polio. We hope we're right behind it for breast cancer. So thank you again. We're honored to be here, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah. All members.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work. Thank you. Mark, if we have the people from the Obie House, please come forward. Oh, what the heck? We didn't get shirts. Steuben and Obie. Hey, how are you? Come up here. I just want to say real quickly that, here, just stand up here a little bit, that the Obie House is, well, some people say Obay, but we in the West End say Obie House. And so I just want to say that they have been part of the community for so long. They help maintain a memorial outside of their building, outside of their facility. If we ever need meeting space, they make it available to us. But they're just, it's just good to know that it's still there. I'd like to see us invest more in places like this that have invested in us for so long, but they've been around for over 200 years. So they seem to be doing well without us, but we'd love to see more from the City of Pittsburgh in terms of helping maintain these beautiful facilities. Whereas, the Obie House, as it's known today, was built in 1823 by John Obie. It is, I would say it's also on the corner of Steuben Street and Obie Street in Crafton Heights. It is among the oldest tavern in or around Pittsburgh. At the time it was built, the area was considered Chartres Township, and it was annexed to the City of Pittsburgh in 1921, and is located now in what is known as the Crafton Heights neighborhood. And whereas, the inn was originally built to accommodate weary travelers on horseback and wagon, and many great herds of cattle also passed by their way further west, on their way further west. Many famous men have enjoyed the hospitality there, such as Andrew Jackson, Sam Houston, and Henry Clay, who has been reported as playing the fiddle and dancing during his stays. And whereas, in 19, I'll say now we have women going there, in 1932, a judge ordered a padlocking injunction for one year against the Obie House after a raid was conducted in June of that year. And whereas, the Obie House Tavern is a prime historical example of a roadhouse that has literally been a neighborhood bar for over 200 years. And whereas today, I want to know why it was padlocked. And whereas, the seventh owners of the Obie House Tavern, Mark Culp and his wife Chris Allen, continue the hospitality, good food, and live music for which the inn was known. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend, hereby recognize the Obie House Tavern and thank Mark Culp and Chris Allen for continuing its history in the City of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 to be Obie House Tavern Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. You want to say a few words? A few words, Mark. A few words.
Next time you want a cattle drop, just drop up and have a drink.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And Councilman Wilson.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is a soggy morning, mornings in Pittsburgh recently. And this is a nice, bright event for Pittsburgh that's coming up. So I have forming the Pittsburgh Chapter for Women in Bio, joined by Dr. Parul Nishan and... Ari Dollar. So very nice to have you here. And to do some recognition, I thought it would be appropriate to give a proclamation to recognize the event that's coming up. And that event is tomorrow, on the second. I'm always checking my watch. So tomorrow and the second, and, you know, it's in my district, and I think it's phenomenal what your chapter has done in Pittsburgh to support the women in the life sciences, not only through their early career, but also through the development. So with that, I'd like to read the proclamation and have you say some words and promote your, all the good things that you're doing here in Pittsburgh. The Pittsburgh Chapter for Women in Bio is a nonprofit organization working to support emerging leaders in the life sciences of Western Pennsylvania, Eastern Ohio, and West Virginia. Whereas, Women in Bio is an organization of professionals who volunteer their time and are committed to promoting careers, leadership, and entrepreneurship for all women in life sciences. And whereas, Women in Bio members reflect the increasing spread of the life sciences and have careers within biotech, pharma companies, universities, institutions, law and accounting firms, marketing and PR firms, CROs and CMOs. And whereas, Women in Bio promotes entrepreneurship, innovation, education, and mentorship among women across our region. And whereas, through the Women in Bio Pittsburgh Chapter, women can connect and network with industry peers and are exposed to various opportunities for women to reach their highest potential within their field and professional development. And whereas, Women in Biotech, I'm sorry, Women in Bio Pittsburgh will be hosting the 12th Annual Pittsburgh's Outstanding Women Entrepreneurs Rally Power, P-O-W-E-R, event focusing on the role of robotics in biotech on October 2nd, 2024. And whereas, the organization's platform has generated innovative ideas and has fostered diversity at the highest level of leadership within these industries, which has directly impacted the talent and economic development across our region, our regional ecosystem. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does commend Women in Bio Pittsburgh Chapter on its innovative economic impact within our community. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October 2nd, 2024 to be Women in Bio Day here in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Doctor, if you'd come up?
Thank you. Well, that proclamation was great. Thank you. It described our organization very well. And we are very honored. Laurie Dollar here, who's a former chapter chair. I'm Parul Nishan, the current chapter chair. It's a volunteer rotational leadership position. We are all biotech professionals here who are working within the City of Pittsburgh. I am an immigrant who came to the city 20-plus years ago. I've been trained in the universities here. I've worked here for the last decade. So, you know, this particular organization has really personally helped me. And I'm very committed to the organization, which, as the proclamation read, directly impacts a lot of innovation, entrepreneurship, economic development with the life sciences, as well as mentorship, an umbrella organization for, you know, especially for women, but also the events are gender neutral. So we really spark very high-level conversations. You know, the event tomorrow is the role of robotics in biotech. And we are really curating this conversation with local women leaders and what's happening within our city itself. 100 people are signed up to attend. We still have a spot for you if you want. It's at Aloy 26 tomorrow evening. There'll be good food. So if you're still available, I know you guys are all busy, but please come if you can. But yeah, thank you so much. As you know, we are an organization of professionals committed to promoting careers, leadership, entrepreneurship for all women in life sciences. So it is a national organization, 13 chapters across US, as well as in Montreal, Canada. Really, a niche organization, does a lot of good work, volunteer-driven. So we really recognize the honor you're bestowing upon us, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Would members honor us to come up and take a photo? Try and promote tomorrow. Appreciate.
And we have one to be read into the record from Councilman Wilson.
Councilwoman Wilson presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October 6th, 2024 to be Riverview Park Day, and October 10th, 2024 to be National Walk to a Park Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may be before a city council. Profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronaldin Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Bill Thuber, and St. Petersburg, Russia, globalinfointelligencenetwork@gmail.com. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Astronomical Society, the Geological Society of America, the American Historical Association, American Society for Microbiology, and the American Physical Society. I am an admirer of the work of nuclear physicist Dr. Jatia Hart, a woman in physics at the Idaho National Laboratory. She is the Director of Nuclear Nonproliferation. She's a Black African-American descent woman who is brilliant and also, to many people, very pretty. She was on the show Survivor. A concern of this council is museums. As I said last week, continuing that a bit, there was a proclamation for the John Hines History Center and Museum, the JHHCM, Ha Kuh Basukan Museum in Asian, New Hongo. The JHHCM is the best in the United States. As I mentioned last week, Mr. Wilson and the crew who were here from the museum did not give an example, but I did offer one that exists in the museum, Zentaku, the calculator, which is one of the most important inventions in human history. 1642 to 1645, the mathematician Leis Pascal invents the mechanical calculator in 1947. Physicists, US American doctors William Shockley, John Bardine, and Walter Brattain invent the transistor. It's an electromagnetic information and storage device, one circuit. But Kilby and Nois invented the integrated circuit, which combines a number of different of these circuits, leading to the microprocessor, which leads to microchips and the inventions in the devices which are so popular in this room and elsewhere. You know, the cavilar in Espanol means muse. And I am much more impressed with the muse, to me, of Dr. Shirley Anne Jackson. She of Black African descent, elementary school bumblebee flight, biophysics expert, high school valedictorian. She rather, she and Hart, rather than Stallion, in Atlanta with Harris.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Harold Keller.
Morning. Harold Keller from Beach U. Once again, here to talk about...
Good morning. Harold Keller from Beachview. Once again, here to talk about that tired old issue that nobody cares about, PC TV. I know it's over now. It's gone. It's history. Get off it. Forget it. I know all that. But however, when I tried, when I was here two weeks ago, I said that I was going to contact the executive director and have some questions for him and ask him to send me the records of the station, what was going on, the files and everything. He said, no problem. I'm cooperating. I'll answer any of your questions. You don't even have to come down. I'll email you all the material. Fine. So that was two weeks ago. Never heard from, never heard a word from him. And I emailed him and called him. He didn't pick up the phone. And I said on the emails and the phone, I just want to ask you how, in a little organization like this, this obsolete, this obsolete little organization, and nobody even knows anything about it, how can you be making $88,000 a year? How could the board of directors have approved that? The station wouldn't survive if you're paying an $88,000 a year salary. No way. Plus, you're taking one-third of the funding for your salaries, 33%. I mean, this, I mean, I know I went ballistic about it. And I was ballistic about him when he wouldn't pick up the phone. And I said on his answering system, look, you got to talk to me. You're accountable to answer these questions. And that station could have survived if you hadn't been taking whatever was going on between you and the board of directors, $88,000 salary and a third of the funding. I mean, it's ridiculous. And you're not, and you're supposed to be answering the questions, and you're not. And I know you were audited. Said you were audited by a city auditor. Well, okay, maybe, maybe something was going on with you and the city auditor too. Should have been independent auditor. But, so there's just so much that's going on. And now, I just, now they're gone. Can't even find them. And what are board of directors? What were they doing? What was he doing? He didn't even get the funding to be able to save the station. That was his job. Go out there and do what he had to do to get funding. I know with the grain, you got to go around begging and kissing up and all that kind of stuff. But that was his job. And he wasn't even doing that. And the station's dead now because of this. So the station's not important to a lot of people. I know that. But it was important to me. And Mr. Williams, the future today, was important to him. So I just want those answers and wish to get those answers. Bring him in here and I'll grill him. I don't care. I don't care. Everything's off the record now. Everything. So, so thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak. Yes, come up to the podium.
Okay, right here?
Yep.
Thank you. Hi. So yes, I'm here with Pittsburgh for Public Transit. And I just wanted to advocate another kind of a subset of people that I think is very important that we have, of course, empathy for people who have mobility issues. And we know it can happen, myself included, at any time. I've got gout now, and I get, you know, ankles go out and I'm on crutches and stuff. But the way I came to leaving what I call a car-free lifestyle was back in 2011. I was 47. I was a home healthcare aide. I had a Subaru Outback. I was heading to work in the north side, North Hills. And my car broke down on Fort Pitt Bridge, kind of a rough place, you know. And Ryan Automotive at Craft and Ingram, it kept breaking down. I said, you know what? I was so frustrated. It was January. I said, that's it. I parked it in the strip district, sat there for two weeks. And I said, in that two weeks, I'm going to try and see what it's like to live without a car. And I'd like to say for the week without a car, not just empathy, give it a try. It can make some real improvements in your life. It's been 12 years now. And I can tell you, it's been one of the best choices I made, lifestyle choices. Health-wise, I dropped 20 pounds. I struggled with weight without even dieting in the first three months of living without a car in 2011. Community connections, the whole reason I'm involved with the Old Stone Tavern, we also gave up the internet home, saved a little money. So I started using the library, hanging out the library, became a volunteer at our West End Library. I was the president of the Friends Council for the CLP for two years. That's how I got involved with the Old Stone Tavern, with the staircases. And now I lead hikes with Venture Outdoors. And I'm telling you, it's just, it's amazing. And not only that, I go downtown so much more. Just take yesterday. So we were in Lawrenceville. It was raining. Without a car, without having to worry to park, I just, I walked down to 40th Street, then I walked up Fifth Street and checked in at the library in Lawrenceville. And then I walked up to Bloomfield, and then I took a bus home from another neighborhood. And I've done that in Oakland. I started in Oakland, walked through Shenley Park, went to eat in Squirrel Hill, and then I took a bus home from there. So all these little connections, and I know I'm just speaking to my lovely government from my hometown that I love so much. But if you could disseminate to your constituents, and I would just love to spread the word more, that more people who choose to live this way, less congestion, less gridlock, better health outcomes. I mean, you know, and I was able to quit my second job and just focus on more of the things I love, like saving the Old Stone Tavern and advocating I'm here on a weekday. So, and be specific, we are working on the first bike lane in the West End. And that there, next year, the plan's already there, but we can have a safe bike lane from the Old Stone Tavern to the West End Circle. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name's Linda Van Buren. I live in Elliot. And I'm here for the Public Transit proclamation. But I also wanted to address the issue of traffic lights in different parts of the city, particularly the, they should have one in front of Pittsburgh Ballet Theater School because it's highly dangerous to cross there. In fact, many years ago, one of their telemarketers got hit and killed and got dragged past the school. And I have to, I take classes there, and I have to ask other people to help me cross the street because I'm that frightened. And I think that there should be a real traffic light instead of this little blinking thing that they put there that people ignore. I mean, I said to people, if it was a boys soccer team or something like that, they would have traffic lights everywhere, or baseball, or things like that. The arts are not respected in this city enough to have a good traffic light there that they really need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michelle McMillan. I'm one of the D-Rod 26 families who got burnt out on Fifth Avenue, 2019. We were relocated. But I'm here to talk about the Port Authority bus. I'm very upset with the CEO. She hasn't listened to the cry of the people. I've been late twice at my job. My boss has warned me. If I'm late again, then I have to find a new job. The buses she has stopped, the 71A, B, C, and D, it is a tremendous downfall for these cities. Why was, I don't drive. I don't have a car, but I'm trying to get my license. So why should I be limited to the bus? Or why are these bus cuts taking place at 6 o'clock for Penn Hills? And why can I not? If I worked at nighttime, I can't get home. I got to depend on the jitney. I don't have that money to pay the jitneys. I don't have that money to pay Z Tripp or whatever they call themselves. So what I want to do is, and I apologize to anyone I offend, but I want to pack her up, take her to the airport, and tell her to get the hell out of Pittsburgh. That's where I'm at. She's making it hard for school-aged children. She's making it hard for employees, people. And I don't think we have to be subject to this. We know where she came from. We know what she did in Florida. She got to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Good morning, Special Agent Sunshine. How is everyone? How y'all sleeping? You're not. I know it. First of all, I just want to return to sender any voodoo hexes cursed ascend towards me. One hundred million, billion, trillion googlyplex in Jesus's name, I pray, amen. Because I know all of you do it. You can't hide it anymore. That's why you're not sleeping, because it's being returned to sender. And justice for all. That's what's said in the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Justice means giving each person what he or she deserves, his or her due. Really? I still haven't received anything that was taken from me. Nothing. I'm still homeless. Isn't it amazing that I look like this? And I live on the street. There's some people really pissed about it. How is she doing this? How? How? The Most High God gives me my health and my strength. Some of y'all need to start praying for it, because you're going to need it. Proverbs 22:8 says, "Those who plant injustice will harvest disaster, and the reign of terror will end." Proverbs 26:26, "Enemies' injustice may be concealed by deception, but their wickedness will be exposed in the assembly." City clerk, Kimberly Clark, you get all the public documentation, personal information. Apparently, you distorted mine, changed all the information about me to steal from me. Really? That will be investigated. If I were you, I'd get a lawyer. I will be representing myself, because I know all the facts about what you've been doing in the background. And you won't be able to hide it anymore, because other people see it too now, like the world, maybe, shining a bright light on what you've been doing. The Bureau of Justice Statistics is founded on the concept that crimes against an individual are crimes against the state. Really? NSA created some type of neural link chip that they're installing in people's left eye to steal passwords, bank statement information. This is how they're stealing from us and making us live on the street. Really? We'll see how long it lasts. Here's some people who may have been responsible for doing this to me. Sergeant Major James Edward Howard, Samuel Gray Conner, Marvin Beatty, James Riley, I don't care, Ronnie Davis, Earl Palmer, McNeil. Somebody did this to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Time expired. Next speaker, please.
This is more of a thank you and continue of this morning. I burned it from Beachview. At the end of Smithfield Street, if I'm trying to cross to the trolley, the people coming off Smithfield trying to make a left onto Carson Street seem to think that they have the right of way. My life has been put in danger. I have seen bikes, anybody crossing. They just think if they make that left. I would love to see what they have in Squirrel Hill at Forbes and Murray. They put that light on, and everybody can cross. I think they need something like that at the end of Smithfield Street. Thank you for the bike lanes in downtown. It's beautiful. I love taking my grandson with me. I love going down to the strip district. We're really making a lot of effort, and it's showing. At least I can see it. Just on a beautiful note, about our cultural diversity and love in the city. I was at church last week, and somebody made an anti-Semitic remark, and I got frustrated and got in my chair, went down Noblestown, got a bus, and went to Point State Park, my favorite place to pray. And I was going down along the river. The game was going on. You could sit at Point State Park and watch the game. I didn't know that. But there was a Muslim community there, and traditional because the women were covered. And there was a bench, and it said, free hugs. And I tapped the lady on the shoulder, because I needed a hug. And her community looked at her like, oh. And her husband said, no, that sign was there already. And I just, I went to go. And she stood up in front of everybody and said, can I give you a hug? And I said, yes. And much to everyone's surprise, she got up and she wrapped her arms around me and gave me the most beautiful hug. And this is Pittsburgh. So I want all of you to work together and remember this story. This is Pittsburgh. When we can step out of our element and give someone a hug. This is Pittsburgh, because we all need hugs. We all need safety. We all need to travel and get to places safer. And sometimes we just need to hug one another. Let's have a National Hug Day in Pittsburgh. But anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. And thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you for listening to my rambling on. I appreciate it so much. And Erica, thank you so much. She contacted me before I left. She's on the board of the library. And I have faith that we're going to have that one little safe, little egress from the Carnegie Library in Beachview. And I really appreciate that. And she said she was going to make Anthony do all the work.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number 968, Resolution Authorizing Council's Consent to an Extension Pursuant to 922.05E of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances of the Deadline to Take Final Action on Council Bill 2023, 2330, pursuant to Council September 24, 2024, interim approval of the same.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I believe we need a roll call vote. This is to formally adopt the interim approval that members adopted a week ago.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 969, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Astrophysics, Inc., for X-ray machine maintenance and warranty services at a total cost not to exceed $32,075 over five years. And Bill Number 970, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Hundred Public Safety, Inc., Doing Business as Performance Protocol to Identify and Implement Solutions to Further Improve Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Recruitment and Retention Efforts at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $38,172 over one year.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 971, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 764 of 2023, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to Extend a Professional Service Agreement with STR Grants LLC for Software Services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by extending the term by one year at an additional cost not to exceed
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 972, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to Reimber- to reimburse expenses of PWSA and Kerr for block stone to concrete street conversion performed by PWSA for the restoration in Elliott Project at an amount not to exceed $322,935.09.
And Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 973, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Summers, McDonald, Houdon, Guthrie, and Rout in an amount not to exceed $60,000 over one year for legal services related to pending litigation involving city employees. Bill 974, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a project labor agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Regional Building and Construction Trades Council, AFL-CIO, that will apply to all phases of installation of the city's LED streetlight conversion construction project at no cost to the city. Bill 975, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 840 of 2019, effective December 23, 2019, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2020 Capitol Budget and a 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by decreasing West Ohio Street Bridge Tip by $75,000 and increasing bridge upgrades by $75,000. Bill 976, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2022 Capitol Budget and a 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by reducing bridge preservation and restoration fund tip by $26,898 and increasing bridge upgrades by $26,898. Bill 977, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2023 Capitol Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by reducing bridge preservation and restoration fund tip by $120,650, reducing parking lot bridge at Woodruff Street tip by $2,000 and increasing bridge upgrades by $122,650. Bill 978, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2024 Capitol Budget, the proposed 2024 Community Development Program and a 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by reducing bridge preservation and restoration fund tip by $127,950, reducing parking lot bridge at Woodruff Street by $5,000 and increasing bridge upgrades by $132,950. Bill 979, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through AC. 3033 Center Avenue, Council District Number 6; 5511 Broad Street, Council District Number 9; 6407 Dean Street, Council District Number 9; 6414 Dean Street, Council District Number 9; 6412 Dean Street, Council District Number 9; 6410 Dean Street, Council District Number 9; 603 Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9; 916 Garrett Street, Council District 9; 914 Garrett Street, Council District 9; 913 North Mertland Street, Council District 9; 7036 Bennett Street, Council District 9; 7034 Bennett Street, Council District 9; 818 through 820 Oakwood Street, Council District 9; 1 Oakwood Place, Council District 9; 566 Sickle Street, Council District 9; 568 Sickle Street, Council District 9; 4613 Chatworth Street, Council District 5; 126 Mansion Street, Council District 5; 0 Mansion Street, Council District 5; 240 Renova Street, Council District 5; 203 Kingsborough Street, Council District 3; 0 Paul Street, Council District 2; 2662 Glasgow Street, Council District 2; 22 Conestoga Street, Council District 2; 27 Conestoga Street, Council District 2; 2023 Mountford Avenue, Council District 6; 3580 Elmhurst Avenue, Council District 1; 0 Charles Street, Council District 3; and 410 Rochelle Street, Council District 3. Bill Number 980, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Site Yard Program, Items A through I. 0 Webster Avenue, Council District 6; 0 Webster Avenue, Council District 6; 408 North Matilda Street, Council District 9; 6739 Atwell Street, Council District 9; 5 Tecumseh Street, Council District 5; 400 Marlow Street, Council District 2; 29 Conestoga Street, Council District 2; 1022 High Street, Council District 1; 0 Holbrook Street, Council District 1. And Bill 981, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution 620 of 2016, Effective Date October 21, 2016, in order to rescind the sale.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger? Do you?
Yes, I would like to, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council on Bills 973. I'm sorry.
Leave this Bill 974.
9... Correct, yes. 974, so that this bill appears on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda.
Is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 974 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 982, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the Safe Streets for All Grant Program in an amount not to exceed $1,320,000 to conduct a road safety audit of up to 10 highway injury corridors, develop a Vision Zero Focus Complete Streets Design Manual, and deploy three demonstration projects. The grant requires a match from the City of Pittsburgh in the amount of $130,000 and a match from Carnegie Mellon University in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for this stated purpose for a total project cost of $1,650,000.
And that takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 983, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article 5, Chapter 911, Section 911.04a22 to the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, property owner, for authorization to conduct an excavation, grading, fill, major use at 1096 Goodman Street, Parcels 129F1 and 129J150, zoned RP Residential Plan Unit Developments, 14th Ward, Council District Number 5. Bill Number 984, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code, Article 4 Planning District, Chapter 908 Public Realm Districts, Chapter 909 Planned Development Districts, Article 5. Use Regulations, Chapter 911 Primary Uses, Section 91102 Use Table and Section 91104 Use Standards, Chapter 912 Accessory Uses and Structures, Section 91208 Accessory Dwelling Unit Overlay District, Chapter 913 Use Exceptions and Conditions Not Listed in Use Table, Section 91302 Administrator Exception, and Article 9 Measurements and Definitions, Chapter 926 Definitions to Address Fair Housing Act Inconsistencies in the zoning code. And Bill Number 985, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, a certain site known as Pittsburgh Stained Glass Studio, located at 160 Warton Street in the West End in the 20th Ward City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Bill 984 is in conflict with Bill 701, which was introduced in July. Bill 984 cannot be introduced until Bill 701 has a final vote. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Thank you very much. The Chair agrees that Bill 984 is out of order and therefore will not be introduced today.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to myself. Madam Clerk?
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 986, Resolution Reappointing Afton Giles as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a term to expire September 1, 2028. Bill Number 987, Resolution Appointing Helena Prokopio Ross as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a term to expire September 1, 2028. Bill Number 988, Resolution Appointing Joshua Schooneman as a Member of Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a term to expire September 1, 2028. Bill Number 989, Resolution Appointing Katie Weddick as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a term to expire September 1, 2028. Bill Number 990, Resolution Appointing Larson Scheller as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a term to expire September 1, 2028. Bill Number 991, Resolution Reappointing Alyssa Eberhart as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a term to expire September 1, 2028. Bill 992, Resolution Reappointing Rachel O'Neal as a Member of the Planning Commission with a term to expire January 1, 2030. And Bill Number 993, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended September 27, 2024.
Thank you. So for Bills 986 through 992, we need a motion to approve or to interview.
Motion to interview.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are you interviewing the reappointments as well?
Interview for the reappointments.
Okay.
For the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, for the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with the clerk to get those scheduled prior to our Standing Committee agenda.
Thank you.
And then for the communication from Director Pollak, we need a motion to re-receive and file.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Communication has been filed. That takes us to Reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I register aye votes for remaining? Or for all of, all the votes that will happen now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 960, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for September 25, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 905, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Dentons, Cohen, and Grigsby for one-time legal services rendered for an amount not to exceed $42,570.90 over one year. Bill 906, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional service agreement or agreements with Spillman, Thomas, and Battle in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for legal services related to pending litigation involving city employees over one year. Bill 907, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Robert Furfer and his attorneys Porter, Clark, and Ward, LLC for a single payment in 2024 in an amount not to exceed $75,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 908, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Jane D. Simone Esquire for arbitration services for an amount not to exceed $5,637.80 over one year. Bill 910, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2019 Capitol Budget and a 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing bus rapid transit by $249,377.16 and increasing complete streets by $249,377.16. Bill 911, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2022 Capitol Budget and a 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by reducing bridge preservation and restoration fund tip by $28,050 and increasing Swinburne Bridge Tip by $584,500, of which is provided by the Federal Highway Administration and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 961, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for September 25, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 882, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter into a license agreement or agreements with the University of Pittsburgh in an amount not to exceed $10 over 10 years for space provided in the Cathedral of Learning for the placement of public safety equipment related to radio communications and other community safety efforts. Bill 883, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 Acceptance of Gifts to City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the Department of Public Safety to receive a donation from Public Safety Dogs, Inc. of a fully trained bloodhound valued at $10,000. Bill 884, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with Norfolk Southern's Safety First Grant for the purpose of receiving grant funds in an amount of $15,000 to purchase non-floorinated firefighting foam. Bill 885, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Highway Safety Project Grant for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $616,188.78 for enforcement and public education around impaired driving, aggressive driving, occupant protection, and pedestrian safety. Bill 886, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pulse Point Foundation in an amount not to exceed $6,000 for the city's share for the license fee for the annual renewal of the Pulse Point Emergency Services Application.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
Bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Ward, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number nine sixty-two, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill nine twelve, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Program for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cent to replace the traffic signal at the intersection of the Boulevard of the Allies and Ward Street. Bill nine thirteen, Resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Program for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of five hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cent to replace the traffic signal at the intersection of Brownsville Road, Beck's Run Road, and Biscayne Drive. Bill nine fourteen, Resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light Go Program for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-one cent for intersection upgrades of five locations in the city of Pittsburgh. The grant requires a match from the city of Pittsburgh in the amount of five hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and six cent for this stated purpose. For a total project cost of two million, nine hundred, three thousand, two hundred and five dollars, two million, nine hundred, three thousand, two hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cent. Bill nine fifteen, Resolution authorizing the city of Pittsburgh, the director of Public Works and the director of Finance to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company to provide, install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew, and finally remove one light pole and one anchor along with fifty feet of vegetation clearing rights located upon city-owned property along South Broadock Avenue and Frick Park at no cost to the city. Bill nine sixteen, Resolution provided for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, utility, right-of-way, and construction phases of the Swinburne Bridge project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed fifteen million, four hundred thousand dollars, an increase of four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars from the previously passed authorization, reimbursable at ninety-five percent in the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Bill nine seventeen, Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers, Inc. for costs associated with the CBD Signals Phase Four Project providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed five hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-four cent, an increase of zero dollars from the previously passed authorization, five fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-four. Bill nine eighteen, Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements between the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County for costs associated with the Armstrong Tunnel Project providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixteen cent, an increase of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cent from the previously passed authorization, seven sixty of two thousand and twenty-three. Bill nine nineteen, Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with KCI Technologies, Inc. for costs associated with the Twenty-Eighth Street Bridge Project providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-seven cent, an increase of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cent from the amount previously authorized by Resolution six sixty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three to add additional funding for preliminary engineering phase of the project. And Bill nine twenty, Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Kemley Horn for work on the citywide Intelligent Transportation Systems Project at a cost not to exceed three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, an increase of fourteen thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilperson Robert Sharland, presenting the Committee of Human Resources.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill number nine sixty-three, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill eight eighty-one, Resolution amending Resolution number four eleven of two thousand and twenty-three, which authorized the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Bike Share Pittsburgh, Inc. to provide annual Pogo Bicycle Share memberships to any city of Pittsburgh employee requesting one and providing for the payment of the costs thereof by increasing the authorized spend by thirty-five thousand dollars for an additional year, for a new total not to exceed cost of seventy thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Warwick, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number nine sixty-four, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill nine twenty-one, Resolution authorizing the office of the mayor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into one-year mini reimbursement agreements for the two thousand and twenty-four Love Year Block Program at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars over one year. And Bill nine twenty-two, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement with EcoTone Renewables in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars to support the city's USDA community composting pilots.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith, presenting the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clark.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill number nine sixty-five, Reported a Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill nine oh three, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education for the purpose of providing meals in connection with the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Food Service Program. Total cost shall not exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over one year. Bill number nine oh four, Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution seven twelve of two thousand and twenty-two as amended, entitled: Authorizing the mayor, director of Parks and Recreation, and the director of Finance to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an amended sublease agreement or agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania for the continued operations of the Lawrenceville Senior Center located within Leslie Park as originally authorized by Resolutions fifty-five and ninety-one of two thousand and eleven at an overall cost of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and with the term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, to extend the contract with a term now expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven and increasing the cost by fifty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars for an updated not-to-exceed cost of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number nine sixty-six, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill eight eighty-seven, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to amend and renew the agreement with Clupify to provide a sustainable procurement platform software solution for some not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars for one year, whereafter it will be put out to bid.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill number nine sixty-seven, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill eight eighty-eight, Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for two fifteen South Twenty-first Street at no cost to the city. Bill eight eighty-nine, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an NFL draft funding agreement or agreements with the Greater Pittsburgh Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc. doing business as Visit Pittsburgh for the coordination of municipal, governmental, and other services required for the two thousand and twenty-six NFL draft at a cost not to exceed one million dollars over three years, plus the value of various in-kind city services. Bill eight ninety, Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for costs associated with the Ruth Finch Street retaining wall providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed a total of one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cent, an increase of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cent from the previously enacted authorization, fully reimbursable at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh, and further amending Resolution eight fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three by increasing slope failure remediation by two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cent. Bill eight ninety-one, Resolution repealing Resolution two ninety-eight of two thousand and twenty-two, effective June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the twenty-sixth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block seventy-seven N., lots one oh three and one oh four, two forty-three and two forty-seven Kennedy Avenue, Council District number six, at no cost to the city. Bill eight ninety-two, Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of block nine M., lot ninety-seven in the third ward, city of Pittsburgh, Cliff Street, Council District number six, no cost to the city. Bill eight ninety-three, Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and Ryan and Veronica England for the sale of block fifty G., lots four, seven, and eight in the tenth ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Rosetta Street, Council District number nine, at no cost to the city. Bill eight ninety-four, Resolution approving execution of a deed by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and Somerset Neighborhood Association to convey block eighty-eight G., lot three seventy-five, block eighty-eight H., lot two fifty, block eighty-eight M., lots one fifty-eight, one sixty, one sixty-two, and one sixty-four, block eighty-eight R., lot one twenty-one, and block eighty-eight S., lot fifteen, private ways and open space in the fourteenth ward, city of Pittsburgh, Squaw Hill South, Somerset, at Frick Park, Council District number five, no cost to the city. Bill eight ninety-five, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the twelfth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block one twenty-five H., lot three forty-five. Zero Bennett Street, Council District number nine, no cost to the city. Bill eight ninety-six, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the twenty-sixth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block seventy-seven N., lots one oh three and one oh four, two forty-three and two forty-seven Kennedy Avenue, Council District six, no cost to the city. Bill eight ninety-seven, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the twentieth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block forty-two N., lot one forty-three, ten twenty-two Fairdale Street, Council District number two, at no cost to the city. Bill eight ninety-eight, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the thirteenth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block one seventy-four J., lots two seventy-five and two seventy-six, block one seventy-four K., lots two seventy-three and two seventy-four, zero seven twenty, seventy-two thirty-three and seventy-two thirty-five Bennett Street, Council District number nine, at no cost to the city. Bill number eight ninety-nine, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the eighteenth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block fifteen M., lots two fifty-seven, two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine, two sixty, two sixty-one, two sixty-two, and two sixty-three, Estella Avenue and Shelfon Street, Council District number six, three, at no cost to the city. Bill nine hundred, Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the thirteenth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block one seventy-four K., lots three forty-one, three forty-one A., three forty-two, three forty-two A., three sixty-one, three sixty-one A., three sixty-one B., three eighty-seven, three eighty-nine, and block one seventy-four P., lots one seventy, one forty-one, one forty-three, one fifty-three, one sixty-five, one seventy-one, one seventy-two, one seventy-three, one seventy-six, one seventy-nine, one eighty-four, one eighty-eight, one ninety-one, one ninety-two, one ninety-three, one ninety-nine, two twenty-three, two fifty-nine, two sixty, two sixty-one, two seventy-three, two seventy-four, two seventy-five, two seventy-six, two eighty, two eighty-one, two eighty-two, two eighty-three, two eighty-seven, and three eighty-four Bennett Street, Stewart Street, six ten Stewart Street, Kelly Street, seventy-three eleven Kelly Street, seventy-three forty Kelly Street, Hamilton Avenue, seventy-three seventeen Hamilton Avenue, seventy-three sixty-five Hamilton Avenue, and Formosa Way, Council District number nine, at no cost to the city. And Bill nine oh one, Resolution authorizing the Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the twelfth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block one twenty-four N., lots three twelve, three twelve A., and three twelve B., block one twenty-five B., lots one twenty-six, one forty-one, one forty-three, and one sixty, Stovner Way, Meadow Street, Lowell Street, and Carver Street, Council District nine, no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just, I would miss the conversation when we talked about the NFL draft and the funding agreement. And, you know, we've heard a lot of different things. I just want to say that, from the beginning, I think my comments have been that, I think it's great, um, that we're bringing, that, first of all, I want to thank Senator Fontana, because he was also very involved in this. I don't know if anybody's mentioned that. But I want to thank Senator Fontana for his work on that. And, um, and I want to say, I know a million dollars is a lot of money. But this is what I said when somebody asked me about it initially. I really feel like that Steelers, in particular, have done so much for the city of Pittsburgh. Whether you like it, dislike it, whether you like sports or thing, I'm not a person who follows sports at all. But I remember when I was young, actually Art Rooney Senior came to our house, because my brother was the vice principal at Central Catholic. And they had some connections there. He was one of the nicest men I've ever met, and that was back then. And they've just done so much for Central, for, you know, the city of Pittsburgh, for Catholic charities. Across the city of, across the board, they've done a lot. And so when we were asked about the million dollars, to me, it seemed like with all they've given back to the city, a million dollars was, was not a lot, um, to ask. Although it is, I know it's a tremendous amount, especially on a strained budget. I do want to say that I appreciate that, and I hope that, you know, this all goes forward, and I'm going to vote in the affirmative today. But I also want to make it clear that if there are concerns about how the dollars will be spent, the controller can audit those dollars under the Home Rule Charter. She has the authority to do that. And so, you know, somebody had asked me if I would put something forward, um, to say that she can do. It's already forward. It's already in, it's already something she can do. And so if, in the event that there's some concerns, I'm happy to put forward whatever need to do to make sure we're watching the dollars and auditing, you know, whatever happens with public dollars coming out of here. I think the bigger concern is how much we're going to spend, um, with in-kind services. And I think that's a huge concern. Um, I think that's a huge concern. I think, I hope that we'll have some of those conversations to understand what all that will bring. But I want to say, I think right now when Pittsburgh's going through so much and the whole country's going through so much, this is something positive. Our residents want it. You know, a lot of our people are asking about this, you know, and making sure it's going to go through. Um, the Steelers who have been so good to Pittsburgh want it. And a lot of our elected officials who worked really hard on it want to see it happen too. So for me, I'm going to vote in affirmative today, but, uh, with the idea that, um, if the, you know, we're going to watch any dollars that are, that are coming out of here because that's our responsibility. And, and so with that being said, and if we don't have open conversations, if we're not having, you know, real dialogue about what's happening and what's expected of the city, then that's a conversation we'll have publicly, um, differently than what we're having today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members? If not, that takes us to meeting announcements. This afternoon at one o'clock, council will hold an executive session on Bills nine seventy-three, nine seventy-four as it relates to litigation matters. Also, this afternoon at two o'clock, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda on the quality of life ticketing chaired by Councilperson Sharland. And tomorrow, Wednesday, October second at ten a.m., council will meet for our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. tomorrow morning. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill up the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, twenty one thirty-eight. Uh, would you, Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, I did just, just quickly, um, just sort of want to mention the devastation from the hurricane, um, from Hurricane Helen. Uh, just, of course, you know, thoughts are with, so many people, um, have died and been displaced, and it just, just something for us all to think about, especially being here in Pittsburgh on Three Rivers. I mean, you know, this was totally, totally unexpected for, for the community in Asheville and around. And, um, you know, obviously, climate change has very much to do with that. I just, just wanted to mention it, um, just something to, in our thoughts for these days. Thank you.
Certainly. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. You're always so thoughtful. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about, um, the today with the fair housing legislation. I, I want people to know, I did caught, talked to the administration, I did talk to other people before about this. Um, and I want, we want to work with people on this. But today, what I really want to say is that we cannot rush something that's going to change the absolute fabric of the city of Pittsburgh. This is something that we need to have a public, very public, very long process to do. Uh, we're coming into an administration with a mayoral race coming up. You know, and you're talking about changing what Pittsburgh is like before there's even an election coming up to know who, whether people like that idea or not. So I think that we need to have very public meetings, and I think that, you know, for city council to allow city planning to do their part, we also have to do our part. We should be holding meetings across the city of Pittsburgh and very televised, very public meetings. And that we're giving educational pieces, not just one side of everything. We need to educate the public on what exactly this means for them. And there may be parts that we agree on, and there may be parts we need to work through. But we need to do that together, and we need to make sure the public is part of that process. So for today, my legislation has stopped that just for temporarily until we have an opportunity because I actually have legislation already on the table. So today, there's actually a, a meeting with city planning, and there'll be a public meeting on the fifteenth with city planning. So with that said, um, that's one of the meanings for my legislation, but there's a lot of other things to discuss there. So I hope that we will engage in a very public process. I know council members, and I want to thank you, Council President, because I know it's difficult to be in that situation and making decisions that you don't always feel comfortable with yourself, but you know it's by law the right thing to happen. And so I just want to thank you for making the decision today to, to make sure the council's voice is not minimized in this process. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we will certainly have a very full, robust, um, discussion and debate when that bill comes forward. But just to reiterate, your point of order today that was upheld was not to not have the bill introduced, but actually follow the rules that govern how legislation occurs here. Um, so I just want to make that clear for the public. Anything else from members? If not, a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
移到
移到
所有在
是
我们是